Good evening, Washington Courthouse. It is 7:30 PM, April 26, 2023. Time for our second regular meeting of this month. At this time, Ms. Hernandez will lead the invocation and I will lead the pledge. You are able, would you stand?
Dear Lord, remind us of our daily blessings of living in the small community. Knowing your neighbors, knowing the parents of your kids' friends, seeing someone you know at the grocery or another entity in town. Thank you for all these things. And as leaders, guide us to lead with a pure heart and open mind while making decisions for our entire community. In your name we pray, amen.
Amen.
Join me for the pledge?
Our pledge is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Ms. Hernandez. Roll call, please.
Hernandez.
Here.
Johnson. Schultz.
Here.
Blair.
Here.
Christman.
Here.
Hawke.
Here.
Lynch.
Here.
Somebody want to make a motion to excuse?
Oh, I'll make a motion to excuse Mr. Johnson.
I'll second that.
Roll call.
Hernandez.
Yes.
Schultz.
Yes.
Blair.
Yes.
Christman.
Yes.
Hawke.
Yes.
Lynch.
Yes. Approval of the minutes from our April 12th meeting. Did anybody see any changes, corrections, et cetera, that need to be made? Now, do we have a motion to accept?
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes from the regular meeting on 4/12.
I'll second that.
Roll call.
Hernandez.
Yes.
Schultz.
Yes.
Blair.
Yes.
Christman.
Yes.
Hawke.
Yes.
Lynch.
Yes. Any communication, Mr. Dennis?
None.
We have Service Safety and Recreation Committee, Mr. Hawke.
The Service Safety and Recreation Committee met in the council chambers located at 105 North Main Street on Wednesday, April 12th at 6:00 PM. Ted Hawke presided and those in attendance were Mr. Steve Schultz, council member; Mr. Jim Blair, council member; Mr. Caleb Johnson, council member; Mr. Jim Christman, council member; Ms. Kendra Hernandez, council member; Mr. Dale Lynch, council chairperson; Mr. Jeff Fenary, police chief; Mr. Ron Sockman, service director; Mr. Jody Langley, assistant fire chief; Mr. Joe Dennan, city manager; Mr. Sean Remington and Mrs. Natalie Wentworth, a citizen. Number one, Mrs. Natalie Wentworth, a resident of 336 Rawlings Street, addressed the committee and noted her concern about the playground equipment at Ayman Park and inquired about maintenance matters. Number two, the committee benefited from a general report by the Washington Police Department. Chief Fenary noted that six candidates had applied for open positions. Chief Fenary noted proposals had been sent to civil service for review. Number three, Chief Fenary noted that the Motorola grant funds have been received. The committee recommended that legislation be brought to council to enter into a contract with Motorola for the purchase of Motorola body cameras, in-car cameras. Number four, the committee benefited from a general report of the Washington Fire Department. The committee noted that D. West had been hired for the new fire administration assistant and would begin Friday, April 14th. Number five, the committee benefited from a general report of the Washington Service Department. The committee recommended that legislation be brought to council recommending that the administration proceed with funding the additional cost of $70,960 for the continuation of the Court Street paving project. The Court Street project is a cooperative project with the Ohio Department of Transportation. Number six, the administration advised the committee that the water reserves were good. Number seven, the committee recommended that legislation be brought to council permitting the administration to proceed with the amendment of ordinance 12010, the purpose being to increase the fees associated with septicage. Number eight, the committee benefited from an update regarding the bike trail. The committee reviewed the updated trail map. Number nine, the committee noted that artwork had been completed on the witness court at Washington Park. Number 10, the administration advised the committee of the repairs being completed to the Pickle Bowl Court at Ayman Park. Number 11, the committee noted that Arbor Day celebration would be held on Friday, April 28, 2023, at noon, located on the courthouse lawn. Respectfully submitted, Ted Hawke, Chairperson, Service Safety and Recreation Committee, Mrs. Kelly Ford, recording secretary.
Do you have any questions or comments? Mark, I got a just question out of interest. When we have body cameras, in this day and age, you see so much seriously on TV about rest and body cameras, and are those public record?
It depends on exactly what you're watching. They actually have to go out and edit the body cam footage in order to protect witnesses, protect images. For instance, people late at night may not have any clothes on, for instance, or they may not have whatever. So they have to edit all that out and edit out comments with reference to possible suspects, for instance. But usually is, that's the problem with body cam footage because you have such a huge amount of data. Someone has to sit there and basically go through that every day, update it and make it available for the public to watch. But the editing process can be long and pretty extreme.
The data storage will be considerable over time and eventually what you'll end up with is a public records officer. Sit there and do that and just respond to those.
Yeah, it's just a humongous amount of time involved.
But once it's edited, then it's public record.
Then it can be made public. But you have to have someone who's able to determine what is subject to public records and what is private and subject to the investigation process because investigations by their, from their inception are private. You can't necessarily go in and automatically just get an officer's file and review it. It's not subject to public records in that regard.
So who's doing that for us?
Well, that I don't know right now.
Right now, the two lieutenants and Jeff perform the service. But eventually that will, the volume of that over time, you're going to have to end up with a dedicated employee does that.
No, thanks. I just see so much of that.
Good question.
We really haven't had.
I was wondering what happened in between all the conversations.
Good question.
Uh huh. Thank you. That's a good answer.
Do we have a motion to accept Mr. Hawke's report?
Oh, I'll make a motion that we accept the minutes as read.
Second.
You can have it. Okay, Kendra. Roll call.
Hernandez.
Yes.
Schultz.
Yes.
Blair.
Yes.
Christman.
Yes.
Hawke.
Yes.
Lynch.
Yes.
Mr. Dennis, your report, please.
Thank you. I would like to thank Roxanne and Debbie at the tax department. The tax season was brisk and busy as usual and would like to thank the citizens for their cooperation and patience. But in particular, Roxanne and Debbie did an excellent job. You know, we will fill out, if you bring in the pertinent information, we'll actually fill out your city tax return for you. And I think people take that for granted, that that is something that just every community in the world does. And I would suspect that relatively few do. But they are, they approach it with a good attitude and the overwhelming majority of people that they deal with are very nice and there are a few who are not. But we get through it and those two have done a wonderful job. If you haven't noticed, it is a little bit warmer outside and grass is green and it does something called grow, which means you need to do something called mow. It would be very nice if you mowed your grass and we don't post a notice and then you don't have to deal with that and you don't end up getting socked with $250 bill when you mow your grass. While you're mowing the grass, it's nice if you do this first. You gotta deal with your trash. Please don't run over it with your lawnmower. But you put that in a trash bag and it goes in the trash can. Your neighbors will love you, the city will love you if you want to. I will happily go put a gold star in your mailbox. But if trash and grass would be something if you dealt with, we'd love you. Would like to thank Shannon and all the members of the street department, the fountain in the pond in Washington Park. Very pleased with that. We're very happy how that turned out. Also, I'm incredibly happy, the one thing we worried about when we put that rock around the bank of that pond is people moving those rocks around that hadn't been a big problem thus far. So please leave the rocks alone. And while you're leaving those rocks alone, the ones around the reservoir, the bigger ones up there. Occasionally, we'll get people who move them so they have a more comfortable place to sit when you fish. Please don't do that. Those rocks have a purpose around the reservoir that's more than decorative. That is a part of the structure of the reservoir. They are there for a purpose to break up the action of that water before it hits the side of the impoundment. So you need to leave those alone because they have a purpose. Whereas around that pond, it's decorative, but it's nice if you leave those alone, too. Nighttime paving for Court Street has been approved. Paving dates, we need to continue to work that out with ODOT and the contractor. Would like to thank Union Township. I went out there last night. Talked to them about an annexation issue with some property owned out beyond Home Depot that is currently in Union Township about bringing that in the city. And there is some documents that Mark will have to draft for us, but we would appear to be in happy agreement with the township. Arbor Day, courthouse lawn, Friday at noon. You can hear Ted read a wonderful proclamation and inspire you to go out and plant a whole forest on your own. But it is something where we get to recognize, in particular, the members of the tree committee who make a dedicated effort every year. And this year, we get to plant two trees, actually. And we are planting those on the courthouse lawn and would like to thank Judge Bender and Judge King for their help and cooperation. I would like to express the most sincere thanks to Don Moore for his service on the board of zoning appeals and his dedicated service to the community of Washington Courthouse. Mr. Moore has made a decision that the BCA is one of the burdens he would like to give up and we thank him enormously for his service on that board and for his service to education and the community as a whole. The Rotary Program, last week, or I'm sorry, this week, I was responsible for. It's a lot of fun. It's a program where we recognize exceptional students from Washington High School and Miami Trace High School, outstanding athlete, outstanding scholars and kids that have really dedicated themselves to service as a community as a whole. We get awarded a couple of scholarships. I'm not going to read through all the kids' names tonight because that'll be in the newspaper on show shortly. But it's a great program. It's great for mom, dad and grandma and grandpa. Kayden Schultz was one of the exceptional young people that we had the privilege of honoring and it's always a great deal of fun. The Patterson Trail Engineering should get back shortly. Ordinance number four deals with septicage rates and septicage is like a septic holler that collects it from like a kitchens, a restaurant kitchen's grease trap or people that have a septic system and then they haul that by truck to the wastewater treatment plant. Ordinance 16, it was mentioned in the committee minutes that you got the Motorola grant money and resolution 16 tells me that it's okay to go ahead and acquire body camera equipment for Motorola for the police department. And resolution number 17 says, Joe Dennan, you need to go exercise the option to purchase the Patterson property. That's all I got.
Any questions of Mr. Dennis?
Is there any signs down at the pond? Don't move the rocks, anything like that?
I don't remember if there is.
Said we put up some, you think?
If it's not a problem, I try to leave it alone because you want the park to look nice and there's a tendency that we stick a sign every five feet. There's things that we need to put up signs about. If people leave it alone, it's not a big issue. I wouldn't worry about it. But it would be nice that they didn't chuck those in the grass because then you're going to run over with the lawnmower and it's just not good.
As a member of the tree committee, I think I can speak for the rest of the committee members that it's nice to be able to plant trees in the courthouse lawn.
Yes, and Judge Bender and Judge King were very helpful with that and we truly appreciate that.
Anything else? Thank you, Mr. Dennis.
You're welcome.
Our Director of Finance, Mrs. Collins, you're up to bat.
Well, I'd like to start off saying that we continue to have a good, strong cash position in our general fund. We currently have $1.6 million, a little bit over that, in the general fund. We had gains on all of our investments in March. U.S. Bank, Fifth Third in our Star Ohio account, altogether had gains of about $29,000. So in one month, that's pretty good. I want to kind of reiterate what Joe said, that I'm very thankful for the great people we have working in the income tax department. Roxanne and Debbie, they continue to do a great job. And as of yesterday, they had processed over, a little over 4,000 income tax returns and they still have some very large mail totes full of returns that they'll be working on in the next couple of weeks. So I just want to give a shout out to them. And that's all I have for tonight. Anyone have any questions?
Anybody have anything for Christine?
I'll have one. Do they have a time limit to get through that big tote you say that's left over? Is there a certain time they have to have all that done?
I don't think so. Yeah, I don't think so.
No, but we try to move through that absolutely as quickly as we can. They've got, I think, three, we've always called them drawers of mail over there. So if they've gone through four, they probably have about three to go.
Yeah, they moved fairly quickly.
They had to have them done or something?
No, I don't think so.
If they've gone through 4,000, they probably have just a little bit more than 3,000 to go.
Yeah, yeah. They go pretty fast, as fast as they could go. Anything else?
Thank you. I know it's a good idea. I stop in there every once in a while to see those ladies and tell them thanks for what they do and they always appreciate it. If you get a chance, stop in over there. Just stop in and say, hey, you guys are doing a great job. Thanks.
They'd appreciate him asking candy at Christmas.
They would appreciate that, too. Even more so than thanks. Mr. Pitstick, besides telling us about body cameras, anything else?
No, no, Mr. Chairman, I have no reports.
Okay, thank you. Under local residents and taxpayers, I see a Kesterkey name here. Jerry's going to speak to us tonight.
Yeah.
Yeah, I thought you'd change your voice.
Okay. You need to state your name and address.
Mary Kesterkey, 1311 Farmington Lane. I want to start out by saying, thank you for letting me come up to speak tonight. And also, we had the State of Ohio out in front of my house today with a microphone on a tripod at lunchtime, listening for the traffic. Of course, there's not much traffic at noon. You know, he should have come out earlier in the morning or later in the afternoon. So a big concern as well, a lot of you know that they're planning to develop the hill up next to me and I'm just kind of concerned about the traffic and stuff like that. I'd like to get a list of any properties, multi-properities, 50 or more apartments and where they are located at because I'd like to see how far they are off of a main street for their entrance and exit. The way it's going to go, this, when this comes in, we're going to have 200 cars in and out, coming all the way down Farmington Lane, which is almost three quarters of a mile long and it's going to be a lot of traffic in and out of there. I just want to see what the other ones look like and check to see how they're handling it, if they have that same kind of issues or not. It's going to be interesting for all of us. It's good to have the, you know, more housing and everything, but to put something like that at the end of a dead-end street is kind of a oxy, I think. So just like to find out from the city if I could get a list of all of those properties that are having over 50 units.
We will, the answer is yes, we will put that together. We don't have an easy, we don't keep a list like that, but we can, we can think about that. The other thing, because the traffic issue was likely to come up. I asked Mr. Sockman to talk with EMHNT and I told him we might have to do some traffic counts for him, which is fine. But to have a conversation with EMHNT about the apartment proposed, because now you know the number of units, they want to bill, and do a little traffic study for us. Because I knew the answer was going to come up, or the question's going to come up. So we will be doing that also. So if you see the traffic counter tubes out, they would do it on Farmington and where they could also potentially turn off to the left there. And then they'll look at the number of units and potentially the number of cars and do their little math.
Okay, thank you. And Joe, I think you guys should have started with your street pole signs, getting the new ones in earlier than what happened since your window's been broken out.
Oh, yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, it fell over.
Yeah, I walked by and I saw that and I thought, what happened? Did you throw something through the window?
No, it was that light there.
I know. All right. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you. No, nobody threw a rock at him.
They threw the pole at him.
They were aiming for Pitstick.
They missed. Didn't realize his office was clear in the back.
Okay, we're ready for legislation previously introduced. First is ordinance, actually the only previously introduced legislation, is ordinance number 3, 2023, second reading.
I'll move we put ordinance 3, 2023 on second reading.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Hernandez.
Yes.
Schultz.
Yes.
Blair.
Yes.
Christman.
Yes.
Hawke.
Yes.
Lynch.
Yes.
Ordinance number 3-2023, amending ordinance number 26-2022 by providing supplemental appropriations for current expenses and other expenditures of the City of Washington Courthouse, Bay County, Ohio during this year ending December 31st, 2023.
Now, new legislation in writing and first is ordinance number 4, 2023, first reading.
I'll move that we place ordinance number 4, 2023 on a first reading.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Hernandez.
Yes.
Schultz.
Yes.
Blair.
Yes.
Christman.
Yes.
Hawke.
Yes.
Lynch.
Yes.
Ordinance number 4-2023, an ordinance amending codified ordinance 52-003, septic disposal.
Next is resolution number R16, 2023, first reading.
I'll move we put resolution R16, 2023 on first reading.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Hernandez.
Yes.
Schultz.
Yes.
Blair.
Yes.
Christman.
Yes.
Hawke.
Yes.
Lynch.
Yes.
Resolution number R16-2023, a resolution authorizing Joseph J. Dennan, city manager of the City of Washington Courthouse, to enter into contract with Motorola for purchase of Motorola body cameras and in-car cameras for the Washington Courthouse Police Department.
Resolution number R17, 2023, first reading.
I'll make a motion that we put resolution number R17 on first reading.
I'll second that.
Discussion. Roll call.
Hernandez.
Yes.
Schultz.
Yes.
Blair.
Yes.
Christman.
Yes.
Hawke.
Yes.
Lynch.
Yes.
Resolution number R17-2023, a resolution authorizing Joseph J. Dennan, city manager or his designee, to purchase the property located at 532 Dayton Avenue, Lot 5, Washington Courthouse, Ohio, 43160, parcel number 212-017-2-00-059-00, pursuant to the terms and conditions contained in the option to purchase attached care 2.
Kelly, could you repeat that? Okay, we're ready for miscellaneous. Mr. Christman, what have you got this evening?
Not a whole lot. I think all the guests we have tonight, glad you came. Invite your friends, bring them up, too, so we can hear from them also. I'm sure some of them have some issues. Also, I have a new great-grandson and unlike Ted, I'm not going to say what he said about his grandson a few years ago. Derek, you haven't forgotten that, have you?
I have not.
Okay. But I won't say that. In fact, I haven't seen him yet. He'll be home tomorrow, so.
He's probably ugly.
Well, it depends if it's my ex-wife side of the family might be, but it's my family. That's all I have. Thank you.
For those of you who don't know, Ted commented on how ugly his grandchild was.
Charlie's a year old, looked like Ted.
Many of us are grandparents. You don't have ugly grandchildren.
Can I add to that?
Well, you're up, so go ahead.
Well, my kids and grandkids are all born ugly as mud, but they have really turned out good-looking. In the end, they're really good-looking.
Kind of like fine wine, it gets better with age.
Yes, yeah.
Anything else now that you've made your whole family mad, Ted?
No, I'm good with that.
I'm good with that. Making them all mad.
Wait a minute, I'm not going to make you, you always had to follow again. I'll go over here. Kendra, what do you have?
I just want to thank those who attended the cupcake walk two weekends ago. It was very successful and it was a first-time event. And then I also want to thank the street department because we had some little hiccups and they like were on it with me and I appreciate that tremendously. And Joe had to come to my rescue for the light pole and a couple other things, so on his day off. But it went well, so anyone who was involved in that. I had five committee members, phenomenal. They did an excellent job. So they're on the next event. They volunteered for the next event. And then just a reminder, Mom's the bomb is our next shop hop and that's May 12th. So if you're a mom or you have a mom or you have a wife who's a mom, might be good to bring her down because it's going to be all about her that night, so.
Thank you, Kendra. Mr. Schultz.
Well, let's see, I don't, I want to thank Mr. Dennis for doing a great job the other day at the Rotary Club. He had a lot of kids there that was handing out scholarships and he did a fantastic job. And I want to mention, we're very proud of our grandson, Kayden. He's really coming along. Well, it depends on who says that. You know, a lot of people say he is, so. And I want to thank Mr. Lynch because he's helped with my grandson along the way. And now he's working on my granddaughter, it'll be the next one coming up, so. And then there's another one coming up, too, so, but anyway. So, but yeah, we're all proud of Kayden and what he's accomplished and what he will accomplish in the future is what we're looking forward to, so. But also, the pond looks great with the stone around it. When you drive by the pond or the first pond, it has a clean, modern look to it. It's just nice. It's just, now if we can do the second pond the same way someday, that would be fantastic, so.
We've talked about that. What we'll, we'll talk to you about some ideas when we get a little bit further along. We want it to harmonize with what you did up front.
Yes.
Some of the slopes are a lot steeper on that.
Yes, it is.
So doing exactly what you did on the front one and parts So doing exactly what you did on the front one and parts of it is gonna be a little bit problematic, but we'll, we've got some ideas for you.
Figure that one out, and the, the fountain looks very nice, so go by the ponds over there, it's got a fountain in the center of it now, the water kinda shrinks up a little bit and keeps it certain, very nice, it looks very, very nice, very, it looks expensive, has it gives the park a whole new look. But that's all I got, thank you very much.
So you can follow Mr. Schultz, go ahead, Jim.
I didn't say a word about chickens, you noticed that.
Until he said that.
Until I said that.
Okay. Well, I was prepared to follow Ted, believe it or not. But now I'm completely confused with the shops, hops, and the ponds. Um, I'm not gonna say anything on camera that might incriminate myself, you know, since this is election year. But anyway, uh, thank you all for coming, it's, uh, your participation really makes a big difference to, uh, as the chicken ordinance showed, it makes a big difference to, uh, to a particular problem or situation that you like to have resolved, so, thank you all and hope you continue to come, as Jim said. But, um, the, you know, the, the city really is, uh, we've, we've went through a lot of challenges. This is my first term on council, a lot of challenges, it's been a great learning experience for me. The citizens have been very positive and cooperative and, um, I would encourage anybody to run for office. More the mayor, you know, it's, it gives everybody an opportunity to express themselves for years and years and years. I sat back like a lot of others and criticized and, oh, why can't they do this and why can't they do that and the other. And finally, even in my advanced years, not as advanced as Dale's, but I decided to take the plunge and, uh, I have no regrets on doing that, so, I just wanna thank all the citizens for their patience and understanding and, uh, that's all I have, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I got flustered a while ago and I had one more thing to say.
Okay, go ahead.
Um, I, I, I'd wanna give compliments to, uh, Mr. Tim Walters for, uh, I think he's been a driving force on the parking lot there at the, what do you call that, Theater Community Center where the, the?
The old middle school.
The old middle school.
Auditorium.
Uh, I think that's, that's turning out pretty good, looking good and, uh.
That does look nice over there.
That parking lot looks good, so, just.
Good point.
That does look nice over there, yeah.
Okay, um, I'll just end by, first of all, saying to Mr. Schultz, this is a completely sexist result, a comment. Your granddaughter is much better looking than your grandson. Anyway, your grandson is one great kid, seriously, and so is his granddaughter, they obviously take after your wife. But anyway, seriously now, I'm being serious, they are great kids and they have, they have been a pleasure to have. And, uh, so I just wanted to add that. I was gonna say nothing, but I got messages on my phone, uh, while we were going through committee meetings that the Blue Lions defeated Jackson this evening by a score of five to two to become the outright FAC baseball champions.
Wow.
And since my grandson is on that team.
Yes.
Um, I am very pleased about that, so anyway, that's all I have. Does anybody wanna make a motion to adjourn?
I'll move.
I'll second that.
Okay, roll call.
Hernandez?
Yes.
Schultz?
Yes.
Blair?
Yes.
Christman?
Yes.
Hawk?
Yes.
Lynch?
Yes, we are adjourned, thank you for your attendance.